Everyone go ahead and let us write.
I read that email, so that worked out a little bit better for us. And, uh, I'm Nick, uh, I have not followed up. I haven't heard anything, I don't know if Ted knows anything since the last time we talked. You can just ask him the next time you see him if everything's okay, or if it's not, let us know. Cause the hospital is gonna try to work something out, but I don't know.
Are you talking about Bill?
Nick Griffisfield?
Well, uh, the sheriff, Bob stopped yesterday. And one of them didn't pay much about it, I don't know. He wanted to check on it.
You know what the issue is?
No, no.
The way I understand it, Ted, if I'm saying it wrong, just tell me I am, but the way I understand it, uh, you know, he had some medical issues that he needed to be taken care of.
Yeah.
In the hospital, Mass Act said, you know, they wanted to do the service, provide it to me. But they didn't have the proper agreement with our insurance provider yet, you know, to get the discount or whatever.
Yeah.
And so, uh, we ended up doing the service and they didn't end up signing the contract till like January this year instead of June of last year when he was needing it to make that sum up. And so, we've been billed higher than what we should have been, or he has. And so, they just wanna try to look at it and compensate it to what it would be underneath the, with the agreement with the insurance company. You know how sometimes you got in-network and out-of-network?
Yeah.
He's been billed for out-of-network. Cause they hadn't signed an agreement yet. So hopefully, you know, we can get that resolved. That's really what it boils down to.
Yeah, I've been talking about it.
Well, I would be too, you know, we, we called and spoke to a couple of representatives at the hospital and they were supposed to be checking into it. That was probably one month ago.
It was.
So, we'll see what Nick has to say as well, we'll give him a call again. Cause he could've went to the dick and got it in-network.
Yeah.
So it's for both ends.
Then, then replace it, I hear, right? Sneak the water.
I told Ted we'd get, uh, now that we've got the medical mutuals settled, that's paying all of our medical bills of to date today. And then the county court system, that was all of those, uh, thirty-seven thousand, so that leaves us with fifty-nine thousand. I believe we're getting, I think it's like seventy-eight thousand coming down from the state for income tax and reimbursements for state's attorneys. So that should be here any day, so that'll help us payroll for next week.
So, the county court system total was thirty-seven thousand? So you, that's a lot of money.
Sure, that's a salary.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, that's, hopefully you know the judge, but hopefully we'll get somebody else in there. Do you get a chance to talk to Chief Judge? Uh, no? Okay, I'll let you talk to him.
I forgot, actually, that's, that's, uh, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, Judge Williamson.
So we'll probably have her pay about fifty or fifty-five thousand in bills for right now anyway. I'll bring the claims over to transfer that money over to Michael Michael. Get all those covered.
Minutes, let me guess.
Me too, alright.
You can take it, Chief Judge. I'll let you if you want. You got a pad down there?
There you go.
I know, but I can give you a piece of paper. You got one?
Yeah.
Lincoln loves me, I'm gonna take minutes.
That's the first time I've noticed it.
No.
Have you noticed, I haven't noticed it in years.
Yeah, I've slept since then, but then again, it, it was due March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, it says.
No, I might have given the wrong one. I had to get last year's out to transfer all the information over.
No later than March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen?
Let me go get you the one for this year, I grabbed the old one so I could do the same thing.
You wanna take that with you?
This, all the bills for medical mutual actually come to forty-two thousand nine ninety-nine twelve. Um, thirty-two thousand of it's what's gonna come out of County General and ten thousand two forty-three is gonna come out of the reserve which we had that tilted. So here's the transfer for those two.
Those are finished ones.
Probation, courthouse rent over a thousand dollars for the week and a planet bill, so.
We've read that one.
There's those, and I'll.
I think we have a credit at the planet.
Do we?
I thought we did, the county courts office?
Check.
At one time we did.
Let me go get this.
Hey, how about this one, this is, here's a nice sweep. Look at that.
Much to.
What's the sweep? We're gonna go with about nine five.
Ted, just a moment.
Was she able to give you any pay last week for it?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars? Man, that's.
Big hit. Kelly's today's day, seventeen.
Yep. I'll get these paid this week. Last week, every time I checked in over there, we wouldn't seem to have. They're starting on the roof this week, as you can tell. Is it, uh, is it okay if we give them Marcia's number too, if they wanna get our number? But there's some pictures to be taken, if they call her, can she take some pictures too? So I'll give them Marcia's number as well. We just went up there, they're tearing off the, of the roof on the old jail right now, is that right?
Yeah.
So they're gonna do it a section at a time. And there's some areas that just need some documentation, pictures taken. So, we plan on coming by every day if we can, but there might be an instance where they run across something and needs a picture taken, so Marcia should be here. Alright, there we go. I talked to a guy about, um, taking out a few of the shrubs up there at the annexed building, right there by the road, right there by that sign. There's a couple of shrubs that really kinda take away from pulling out there. So, uh, he's gonna give me a prize and, you know, just pull that stuff out.
Roll it up, I mean, maybe take care of it over the years, it's gotta wait.
Um, would, uh, I mean, I was just, I don't know what Jeff and Gerald think, but I might not be a good idea, but will we have anyone, uh, trustees or anyone to shake that stuff up or, or pull weeds or? If they do something like that? I mean, I was just thinking, I don't know, what do y'all think if we ask Joe if he got like a truckload of peegraw or something that dropped off there? Like a bank and they just fill in some of that places where Butch was at one time?
You want chat or you want like written?
I don't know, like, uh, I don't know, you get, we should get some type of rock or something at some of those four.
What color is it?
Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Yeah, twelve, twelve.
Uh, half and.
What do you think about?
That's what will be up there.
Yeah, that's what's up there now.
Do you think that would work or not?
Uh, what do you imagine, what is it, shrub watch?
Well, you know, those, those areas that are cut out, it's all kinda going up with weeds now, but they just need some, some new peegraw or something there, you know?
Yeah.
I didn't know. If we had anyone that could do something like that or do it not?
Yeah.
Ted or not, do that type of work? Like, like with a, just a shovel and a wheelbarrow?
Uh, what type, uh, that type's, uh, plastic, laying down.
Well, there's some black felt, or, yeah, of course the grass is going through it now.
Yeah.
But that's the same.
Yeah.
You think that's something Jeff would be worth our time to do or not?
I don't know if it's fun or not, but.
Yeah?
I mean, the gravel, huh, but I mean, just.
What, uh? What, uh, fun you want?
I'm sure the sheriff's got some funds there.
Sure.
Maintenance, courthouse maintenance, I'm kidding, Ted. I don't know, it's just a five.
In about twenty minutes, we'll find out.
Who we'll find out from, man right there?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm asking, you're sitting there.
I guess, um, they just got fourteen days straight work, hanging up signs, they have to load them up, it's been dreadful, I mean.
I know.
Would you rather us, you get someone to do the shrubs, trim the shrubs, or y'all got to make the trimmers up?
Marcia's got all the tools downstairs.
Can a trustee do that type of work or not?
Marcia's with him.
Alright. I mean, there's probably, I mean, around here at the courthouse, I mean, we could probably use some around there, you know, pulling up some grass and stuff.
They're working on this roof right there, they don't wanna put any people.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't wanna lay that rock on.
I'll have a look around like that and see what she backs up.
How's the hotel doing?
Population's down to fifty.
Down to fifty? Down to only ten over capacity.
What's two cars was you want to get rid of? I didn't know, I seen that you want two more cars.
Bobby Norwood's car, the one on the interstate, and Robert McCutcheon's car, this is the oldest charger that we have.
Which one recently we just put like a transmission or do some work to it?
Transmission and the tail car.
Okay, so we haven't put no money into the two that we wanna get rid of?
Not Robert's, now Bobby usually puts some money into it, we're gonna keep it for spare.
Okay.
It's probably at close to a hundred and fifty, Robert's just getting close to a hundred and seventy now. This is the academy with Taylor.
That McCutcheon's car you're talking about, is that that any of those, Robert?
Yeah, it looks nice. They look nice, but they keep clean, but, um, this is like, this is the first charger that we bought.
Now, does that include the ones that JD just got rid of?
Insurance is paid for all low.
Oh, no, the first one he bought, the first one he bought long gone, isn't it? It's done, it melted down. JD's roughest on the good.
Oh, never heard of that.
All he's trying to do is get the oil.
We don't replace those two this year. They're gonna go down on this, not gonna be worth anything, and it's gonna be a buy.
Well, what do you think from McCutcheon's people?
He might get fifteen, another two thousand dollars.
Really? Maybe more than that.
He looked a mile, which is what you're gonna do. It's a straight, thank you, Ted.
Also, they should've put on there the courthouse, to do some more recording.
I think we've all agreed, I'm not putting much.
Alright, I'll second that.
Cheryl, make a motion. Same, that's the same work. How was it? Was it, it was interesting.
Good.
It was interesting. Can I give you a recap on that?
Alright.
Whenever you guys are ready.
We're already.
I thought you guys were dealing with something else.
Making some improvements on the courthouse?
Yes.
Great to get the roof.
Yep.
See, that just shows you we did pay last year, we had much.
That's right.
Jason's saying. Are we all on favor? Got that down. Oh, we're ready?
Yeah.
Kinda caught it now.
Yeah, Jerry, come on up. I don't know if they're shooting you or anything, are you? You're not, you're not gonna shoot me or anything, are you?
Oh, okay, okay.
Not bad. This is your request form for, that I'm supposed to do before I do anything, whether it's travel or class or anything, so that's just a request. One of those to travel, one of those hotels.
I think, uh, Cheryl goes on a note.
Alright, yeah.
I don't know if it's just.
I believe it's just one signature required. So I wanna kinda give you an update, and last week I went to the county official conference in Springfield, which was, uh, uh, interesting. They started the conference, what I thought was interesting, they started the conference off by having the FBI agent that was involved in the, uh, case of the corruption of the Detroit, Michigan mayor. And all of his colleagues that they put to jail. Thought that was interesting, that they start the conference off with a.
Looking at a press.
FBI speaker, I'm looking around the room going, is, is people feel a little uncomfortable around here? I'm not the tax assessor. Anyway, I thought that was kinda interesting, then the Illinois Department of Revenue talked about some of the upcoming legislation, which usually they wanna, you know, pop their constituents out and help them save money. And of course, this whole thing with exemptions, they're all the time wanting to increase exemptions. But it was kinda interesting because the gentleman from the Illinois Department of Revenue had a chart that showed the effects of these exemptions throughout the state. Well, when they make these exemption changes mandated through the state, values are extremely higher in these bigger cities and bigger areas, so it doesn't have the same impact. But he's doing this chart, and it was kinda interesting that REAV got affected twenty percent. In Southern Illinois, we're up in the bigger jurisdictions and we affected it five percent. So, he's trying to get them to understand, when you're doing the legislation, you need to make sure, to understand how that affects, because when you start doing things versus the immediate level, which is maybe a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand in the Chicago area, versus down here where it's a hundred, that makes a big difference. When you're doing some of this legislation, so some of the discussions were about that and some of the effects. And, and of course, their biggest, uh, push and Roberts' bigger pushes is, is getting smaller government overall, and which townships is always the biggest topic, but that's something we don't, we don't even have here. So, um, everything's, we're already working on a reassessment, I, I've got fifty percent of the changes made for eighteen payable nineteen in the system already. Um, I've got probably about a good, between six and ten days, I need to be out in field with Butch. To go out there and inspect the quadrant and also look at any changes out there that we have. Um, I am having a discussion with the city too on, on a flyover in nineteen possibility. But we're gonna see if we can't get it done at a reduced date or reduced rate, because I know that there was maybe some question when the nine-one-one was gonna be able to participate, and we're hoping maybe we can get this cost down.
Yeah, I, I, we really good chance down there, we participate.
Okay, well, like I said, I, I think we're gonna try to get, you know, maybe, try to, try to negotiate down a, a rate, I've got some suggestions on how we can do that. Of course, I know Hardin County and Oak County haven't had a flyover in a while, and they're talking about it, so if we could get a group, that would help, help with the, the cost as well. Um, otherwise, everything's going pretty, I think, pretty efficient down there. Pretty pleased with what we've all been, we've accomplished. Um, the only thing, I, I do have one issue, and, and I, what I did was I contacted the sheriff, we got all this excessive equipment, old equipment, outdated stuff, and I'm trying to dispose of it, and I can't just dispose of it. We had, I talked, I, I think I mentioned it to you, Gerald, about the, uh. Just about, you know, can somebody take this stuff out of here so we can have it for an auction or whatever? So when I contacted the sheriff, the sheriff told me contact the highway department, and when I contacted the highway department, they're like, well, no, we're not gonna do anything. I assumed they didn't have one or three paces and. That, and, and, but I guess my question is, is where can we put this stuff that, I mean, I've got a lot of stuff that is outdated and I need to get a, would like to get it out of my office.
Do you think, uh, when Ted, the future, the auctions off one of those cars, you know, if he gets a couple of used ones, could he do it again or?
I mean, some of this stuff, I wanna be honest with you, these, these, I mean, you're talking five dollars and, you know, and, but I know we have to, you can't just dispose of it. But sometimes I'm going, the cost of these things, uh, to get rid of it's gonna be more than just, you know, I, I don't know. One thing, if we can't have it off, can we use the council there to spec it? See, I always got a couple of desks to go on.
Come with the house that.
Nine-one-one. It's not used yet.
Yeah.
Lawrence. I mean, I've got like, uh, an old, I mean, it's not like that, an old scanner copier that's like ten, fifteen years old. It's just, you know, some of this stuff is so outdated, you can't even get supplies for it. I mean, of course, this is too big, but that jail is total. Right, yeah, we can't, but anyway, that, I, I like that, I like that suggestion.
Yeah.
So do you want me to ask Ted then to see if we can? I think that's a good idea.
What do y'all think?
I would assume, next time he's gonna have auction of the car, repo or some confiscation or whatever, that any of those items that need to be gone, need to be on that auction.
And if you don't auction at that time, or can you just throw it to trash?
No, we can't, we can't just, we can't just.
Even if we try to auction and no one's interested?
Uh, that I don't know, that would be a state's attorney question.
You'd think, put it out there and nobody's interested, then you should go to trash it.
You would think, but.
As it is and costs is more.
Well, that's what, yeah, I mean, to dispose of this with electronics and stuff is a, is a challenge.
Yeah.
And they wanna charge you to do that. I mean, like I said, so some cases, maybe getting five dollars is better than paying fifteen or twenty for it or something. And then, uh, still, and then one last thing too, I'm finishing up the paperwork on this, uh, buyout, I'm still trying to get it right.
Yeah, good Lord, it'd be nice to have that gone, yeah, off the table.
Yeah, if they don't trust me, I'd love it, love it as well. What do you think it'll be, you remember summer or? I'm, I'm hoping here in the next month, that I, I will have everything to the state and hopefully they will expedite it and we will be done, and then we can move forward with whatever you wanna, wanna do with the property. Okay. That's what I'm thinking. Do you guys have any questions, concerns, or anything with? Concerned citizens about their, you know, cause I, I think they're, I think the taxes are gonna be coming out here before too long, the tax bills.
Great news.
Because, well, not for me, but I just, I can kinda tell within the system that they're doing things that, things are, are moving along in the process, so, um, hopefully they can get it out to people, so at least they'll know further in advance. Well, but, yeah, yeah, but we know that was, uh, but hopefully they at least, like I said, treasurer can make them do whenever the treasurer deems.
We got a lot of new buildings out there, new homes?
I didn't, I didn't, wasn't, uh, no. Are you talking about for this eighteen payable nineteen?
Yeah.
I'd say that yes, we, we got more than we did last year.
Okay.
Yes, cause last year it was not, but like this year so far, we've only had like seven or eight building permits, which seems kinda.
But eighteen payable for nineteen?
Yeah, that's, and again, some of this stuff, when people get their building permits in sixteen, they don't get it done until mid-seventeen, they can't pick it up.
It'd be eighteen.
Yeah, and that's, so that's why sometimes.
If somebody's fixing to build a house right now.
Right.
It'd be nineteen at best.
At the earliest, and which, you know, and which I've already, you know, again, I've got a field list already for nineteen payable twenty. So I've got, you know, like, that's how far ahead I gotta be, and then of course, I'm always looking back.
What part of the county are you, uh, doing this year?
I, I couldn't even, it's the quadrant, uh, would be the job of quadrant.
Southwest.
So, uh, yeah. That's, that's, and I don't think there's been a lot of activity out in there, although I did have somebody from that area that was concerned about the tax rate and wanting to know estimate of taxes, and I gave him the formula and said, here's the formula. I'll give you an example of the formula, but I'm not gonna tell you what it is, because I don't know what you're gonna build. I know everybody wants that answer, but I don't have a crystal ball.
If they could tell you exactly what they're gonna build, and then they go build exactly that.
Then that would be fine, yeah, but that's not what happens, they built something different, and then they said, you said, and that's not the situation I'm gonna be in the middle of. And that's why I'm very careful.
You just not say nothing, or you give a range or?
I, I show, I give them the example of the formula, and I say, you know, again, I, you know, and, and, and the cost does not equal value. Cause, you know, I mean, as, as I explain to people, if things were that viable right now, you'd see contractors building houses, spec houses out there, they're not, because there's no money in it. Not, you know, not right, not right at the moment, that I've seen, I mean, I, Kate's have been, and he's been building some, uh, some new stuff. I know he's, he's got some duplexes and stuff, I believe I'm gonna pick them, I think, this year. There's like three duplexes out there on Quill Drive.
Probably been well over a year ago.
Yeah, but he never had them finished, cause don't trust me, I was out there taking pictures of the different states. Yeah, there are people living in them now, so. That's all I got for you, unless you got, you know, any questions, concerns, or? And like I said, if anybody does, send them down to talk to me, a lot of times, they don't, you know, people have questions or concerns, happy to address them. Okay?
Thank you, Eric. Do you wanna ask them about what Cedar Lane asked last week, was it about that road?
You know, I, uh, and, and, okay, so we know that the plat was never recorded.
Sure.
And that, and of course, that's the problem, number one with Cedar Lane. But when it comes to that, how we do our GIS map, that mapping for tax purposes is all based on deeds. So I've never looked to see if, you know, there's a separate deed for the road, I've never looked, but I'll, I'll take a peek at it and, and see.
That's what the guy's concern was with it.
You know, but, but I, but like I said, with, with all that, I, I, I understand the, uh, what people say, and, and this is what they're gonna tell you, well, my property's getting negatively impacted. But here's the problem, I just had a cell out there for not a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I, I won cell recently, so until I have cell data that shows me they're having one, one hundred eighty, ninety, then it's, you, you can see that, but I understand, and, and they're right, the perception's there, you got potholes. You know, people aren't gonna wanna, wanna buy out there, but you have to base, I have to base everything on.
Off of real numbers.
Off of real numbers, not speculative numbers, you know? But of course, somebody could've bought that and paid that thinking that, oh, they were gonna fix that. You don't know what all happened and what conversation went, when somebody purchased, made that purchase, but I, I need the data to reflect, yes, there, there, there's. And I've got since two thousand eight, all that data and spreadsheet, so I can analyze all that subdivision and, and know whether values are.
Has negative trend?
Yeah.
Or trend is negative or not.
So, okay?
Thank you.
If you'd like, would you like me to go down now and come back, or?
No, just give it to us next week, if you get down.
Or whenever.
Okay, we'll do it.
We enjoy seeing you every week.
I don't have a lot to say every week, you know? I just, like I said, I just like to, I like that quietness down there, although I'm excited that we're getting some things done here around the courthouse, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a very good thing.
We're happy about it.
Although I'm a little, little concerned sometimes about them letting us know what they're doing when, so that we can make sure, you know, there's a little bit of communication issues, but that's all. You know, there's a little bit of communication issues, but that's another.
Another day.
We'll get through it.
Yep, we'll make it, thank you so much.
See ya.
Have any questions or anything to show us, give me a holler.
Why's the old link to her when she's telling her that, he walks out, you get it?
How's it going, Gerald? About what we were discussing many ago. If you go down in cottage and get a load of paper.
Or do they have that type of stuff, like where you go pick up other gravel, like decor or anything? Are they gonna have a?
You leave down there, Tommy?
I didn't know if they had decorative rock at these other places like Joppa Road or wholesale.
Many of these guys have that truck trucking and then, it look like, uh, they just, I guess, but they've got maybe something.
Would you be interested in something like that, for these assets? Should you just pick one up and deliver it down there?
Yeah, but, yeah, down here, paying.
What, you think a truckload, or how much you think?
A two wheeler go a long way, wouldn't it?
Yeah, they'll fill it up a couple inches thick or something. Unless you have to, you know, you have a void that you can.
There's two big sections in front of the, you walk in the main front, you know, that's cut out, and you got that section on the side of the building, and then you got the area where that sign is.
Is there a fire box where, you were talking about the area along the building?
Yes.
And then there's one on the east side, see this, is there on thirty street, is there a fire box there?
Yeah, on thirty straight, that's the only one I know about.
Oh, okay.
And then there's two big sections in the front of that, that's kinda cut out. We just didn't know if we can get a, a load of that, and then trustees, spread it all around down there, get that cleaned up.
I can't, I don't have it.
Be a problem. I'd be all this extra to get that word in.
Yeah, we got my deep range on, twenty nine, but. We just called, uh, for size and everything, I don't know what's down there, probably half a thing.
Be, be nice when we get that done before the Superman celebration.
You do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try to work on it in the next three or four weeks.
Yeah.
Jeff's sandwich, like y'all got a lot of signs.
Your foreman was up there with a pickup, he was cooking, or go.
Oh, is that?
Yeah. That's amazing, they're just doing their fun.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll be busy on that for a little while then.
There was a stack of. You know who said something about you?
I was looking for something to do, wasn't I?
I don't know that you've ever been looking for something to do, but you might have been. You got something there.
I don't have a whole lot to, to report or say, I mean, it's.
But we have off everything, some of you.
We don't have anything really to speak of, to get rid of, I mean, we have many items here that we might be able to ground up, but we're. I don't perceive having an auction in, ever, I mean, as far as that's concerned, I, I mean, I, I can't say ever, but I mean, I don't have enough stuff to get rid of that, to do anything with. I'm sure we wouldn't want to, uh.
I haven't hired anybody to do it. Just ain't nothing there.
Yeah.
Well, they had some stuff around here, they talked about, you know, and I, I thought maybe had more stuff than that, but wait. Desk and stuff from there.
Yeah, we don't have any of that kinda stuff down here. One item I thought about, I call it a wheel, it's really nothing either, it's one of our salt grind tanks split, I mean, it's just.
Is that blank?
Fifteen years old or so, and it, it split, it was spewing all our salt, salt grind out the other day, so we had to pump it out, and we need to get another tank that. And we've got a ruined five thousand gallon polyethylene tank that somebody might want to cut out and use for a deer hunting blind or something.
My big issue's split.
Probably getting bigger if you fill it up with water.
Yeah. Get some nice black stuff put on it. Like you said, I'm.
Yeah, we talked about that, that flex tank.
Yeah.
The one the guy gets, that, that bump man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
I think you did it myself, I.
Yeah, I, I just don't think flex tank is long.
Hold that one?
They might temporary hold that for a few hours or something, but. I guess it's gonna be a permanent fix, but. I mean, it's just, you know, pressure on it.
Yeah.
Sun, sun in the gray.
Yeah, yep.
That's just.
Rough on them tanks.
Was it a clear one? Like I said, it's, it's actually pretty old, I mean, it, we've, we've, I've thought it was about fourteen, fifteen years old, at least. I don't know, I don't know how long it's supposed to last, but. Does any, uh, algae grow in that, Brian? I didn't think it would with all the salt in there, I didn't know how that would work. It will do it in fertilizer though. I've seen the salt. And it's pretty salty. Yeah, we've never had any algae problems. I think it's in the tanks, other than the brine, it's just the sand that's in the salt.
Yeah, settled out.
At the bottom of the tank. How high up on the tank is this split? It's right at the bottom, it's probably that high off. Yeah, is it coming off the valve or something, or, that surprised me, you'd think it was gonna split, that's weird to be. It's not the whole thing. Yeah, it just looks like you're peeling a banana back. I was told one time, the way you test those, when they're empty, you walk up there with a wooden baseball bat, slap the fire out of it, and if it. Spider, if it just looks like crystals, you need to replace the tank, but a good tank won't even make a mark. But I've never knocked one of my tanks with a baseball bat either.
When they're empty.
Cool, or empty? Empty, yeah. I wouldn't only hit one fool, he might take a big old bat.
Yeah.
That'd be an approacher, knock you down, I'd say. Four, five, six thousand gallon of water, isn't it? Is the, uh, bridge complete out there? I haven't passed it, uh, there's a neighbor out there, he's not happy with the approaches.
Are they rough?
I have crossed it, are they rough, rough like the? New Columbia Road rough, or rougher, or less rough?
They've kind of just gotten to have one rough like this.
Oh, you're right there by Georgia, they're pretty good, yeah. I'm told everybody, and I put it on Facebook, you can't expect that to be good until we go over it with oil and chip in the summer, and it's just not gonna. And that rock, we put rock in the holes and that's what's all in there, and it keeps on. Is that the problem, it ain't finished, you mean? Yeah, it was part of the project, finish that, but I mean, yeah. The surface, well, that. At the abutment end, it is. I imagine it's still settling even, isn't it? Well, it doesn't settle very much in the road, because we pour that flowable fill concrete all the way up to within as far as the top, so. It's flowable fill concrete and this much rock, so that's not gonna settle, but it does settle out on the shoulders. You get out too far on the shoulders, it'll settle, cause there's, that flowable fill concrete's not out there. Well, I hadn't been out there, I just. But once we, you know, once we get to. When you're out that direction, tar and chip, and you'll patch all the holes, compact it, and then. We're gonna get a grader out there and kinda smooth it off on the approaches, and actually oil and chip probably from thirty, forty foot back on both sides. All the way across the whole bridge deck, make it so, I mean, and that's, just, it just ha- so happened that this one got finished at, at the time of the winter, we're gonna have to wait a few months before we do that. Yeah, I think down at Woods's. Just, I just, I mean, there's really no, you know, huge holes or anything like that, I went out there yesterday because one of the neighbors called me to complain, and. It's just that, you get on one of the shoulders, the rocks getting pushed out of a hole up onto the shoulder, I shove it back in the hole, but it's only a matter of. How long before it gets pushed out in, it's just we have to, we have to get it completely done here, but it's actually oil and chip, it's in a lot better shape here. Then if somebody gets on the shoulder, no matter when it's gonna be, it's a, probably a great hole, cause, you know, the, the nature of it, what we got is a twenty foot road. Coming up to it, and we got a twenty seven foot bridge. So you gotta have shoulders. So, these areas here. For shoulders, if, if you get it with a big truck or something like that and drive here and then cut that corner, yeah, it's gonna be a hole here. You know, we, we didn't have in the project that, to do any payment, you know, we could try, we could, when we do the oil and chip, and we could try to. Pack it in, do it in a can. We could get some rock and put it in there and prepare this, and then oil and chip, kind of a triangle there, so that. At least it'll be sealed up, maybe it'll shed that water better. It's just now, when it's doing that, is we don't have it all tied in. Kinda walling it out right here, with complaints. I go down to there, I'm just gonna use a level bridge. There ain't that thing much traffic there. Don't go a hundred and fifty mile an hour and. I didn't say that, I don't really. But that's, that's a big part of the problem too, is that people, they don't hit a bump and throw themselves completely out of the truck into the ditch, but. It's not an option to slow down from fifty five to thirty five, it's not an option. When I tell you that.
Places to be.
Well, you can't slow down. Anyway, I get, it's all good, but, have you got stack of bill station?
Yeah.
From Juanita's office?
Yeah, um, right here.
So, uh, liberty degree, lovely. Can you both love tickets?
Thank you. Yeah, which part are we talking about, the part south of the highway or north? Or both?
No.
Between highway and South Mission.
Yeah, the, I guess west side, you're going north down the left side. They say all those bitches in, told them about that. Now, I haven't been out there, but I will though.
And they call us about every time it rains, that it washes that ditch out, and it's never really that big a problem.
Does it go over the driveways or just?
Not that I never know, but, but it might, I mean, it might, I, I've not seen it, I don't think there's any driveways on the west side. That, that house that's on the corner that they use as some kind of a facility of some sort.
That's a home or something.
They don't even have an entrance coming off, it comes off the highway.
Well, I think this is north of that, now that.
It's, it's a long way before the first driveway on that side of the road, and.
That's one of them for me.
On the west side.
Yeah, well, we're all past Joppa Road there. There's an old cabin sitting on the corner, I don't know if this guy died or not, but then, uh, Margie Logan, usually, I don't know what name, uh, she's got it down, but. And then. And them bikers had a club up there.
Yeah, that's where they.
Junior Frasier, I think. You know, new house, and. But I, I, I don't know, I'll have to look at it, so. You know, I bet.
Now, that's the first time I heard it. Need us?
You in the meeting?
We are, come in. You're the most.
Right now, we get some phone numbers.
Oh, okay.
No, do you want us right down for you, or?
Yeah, you're right down, right down, not keeping, making you covered. Rip out a piece of paper here with all three, just run it.
Can we also give your?
Speak to you again.
Yeah. Uh, two seven oh, eight five three, forty five twenty. Wanna give your number two, four eight?
Yeah, it's Jerry Bond. B A U T A two.
Gerald?
Six one eight.
Six one eight.
Five five nine, two nine seven three.
It's five five nine.
Two eight four five.
Hey, I'll give you Marcia's number too, right?
Oh, okay.
I've got her number on my phone.
You got Marcia's number, right?
Yeah.
Uh, I would call her first, if you want some pictures taken, if you need something done, if you can't get ahold of her, then call one of us.
Yeah, she can take care of it, yeah, okay.
She can get ahold of us, uh, and then, uh, I'll give Gerald and Jeff your number in case anyone can call you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Appreciate what you're doing. Between the, with Joppa, Joppa Road, you two?
North of that.
North of Joppa Road?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I was talking about that section there between the highway and Joppa Road, there's, there's no.
Yeah, no, no, nothing at all.
You're talking north of Joppa Road?
Yeah.
You know one right, his number down? That's all, I got three. It's still that third, Dryry Road?
Uh, I think so, much, much better, needs to settle down for the needs, I mean, it's hunky, but that's to be expected, isn't it, when you fill in a hole that's fourteen foot deep? It wasn't that deep, but it was deep. Much, much better. I'm gonna drop, I got a few loads of beans coming out, within the next couple of weeks, and I figured that semi might pack some of them in, and if it don't, well, I'll get too many cabbages in a great day. Settle it down, yeah, no, which I like, I love that stuff, eventually, I mean, it packs in hard too, there's traffic over the top of it. I drive slow enough, I don't fling it anymore, and it, you know, it will grind up, pack in eventually.
Less likely this one to wash it out.
Yeah, of course, when that kinda water's coming over, it's rolling fifty pound ripper out my field. And we can hardly stop that, and when we, like we talked about before, we stop. Build a spillway or something. Yeah, if concrete's spillway or. It'd have to be a long one, wouldn't it? Yeah, once you lower the section there. Yeah. Dedicated, it's completely poured, it's spillway, you know, you can, you can force it over its side, it's narrower. All right, well, that's how we do it. I'll see you later. You got a game today? Where is it at?
Karen?
We're chasing each other, just a little, a little bit, I'll see you later.
The four percent.
Well, it ain't gonna be on the minutes.
Well, I, I, I've kinda looked at thing here, you know, check kinds of status.
Our grass is adjourned. Pete got the camera back on over there.
With it, yeah.
That fucking.
Whoa, stuff you get on the camera, thanks a lot, Michelle. Would you like to throw any curse words out there for us?
Nah, I guess they're changing families.
Can we be running out of town on a rail for the way we act?
And things we say. Well, we just did it next week.
We is four percent, let's see, that'd be two thousand dollars.
Yeah. I think they pretty much wrote it down, you know, I, I haven't checked.
Oh, is that what she came in, brought in?
Well, I think they're.
Oh, and just thinking four percent on, uh, forty, fifty thousand would be too green, yeah.
I mean, she gives us, everybody, I, I think everybody has a bit.
I did, to get out here, one by.
Oh, yeah, I've got that several months ago.
Well, I mean, to show us four percent for each of them what their, what their amounts will be.
Karen, fuck, you got forty, thirty, thirty.
What for most of the day, folks, I'm hungry.
See, these other, uh, amounts I gave, they, they haven't had a raise either, so really, I guess this is, this is their old schedule.
I hope you had us going live, didn't you?
Uh, you want me to just keep this for next week?
Y'all didn't have a copy of that? I thought she did.
I did, yeah, she did. I know I'd had one at one time.
I think she just passed it out this past week.
I was thinking, maybe I come back from Florida and it was laying here. I know I'd see it too. Gerald probably got my copy in that.
Think what y'all had was what, was previously what they meant, that is, a schedule for what the future will be, is what you got.
That is what she's wanting passed, what they're wanting passed.
Correct. Can we go make a copy of that for you, Gerald? I think what y'all had was what, was previously what they meant, that is, a schedule for what the future will be, is what you got.
That is what she's wanting passed, what they're wanting passed.
Correct. Can we go make a copy of that for you, Gerald?
What year, so this is down here. That's the old.
That's what you want to do math off of, right?
Yeah.
No raise, yeah, uh huh, that's what I had. But whatever, whichever one I did, I've done some scribbling on.
What they provided was.
A new resolution. What's the percentage difference in? Throw me out of. So, county clerk now is forty one, six thirty, correct?
Yeah.
Times one point oh four, that's forty three thousand two ninety five. Oh, no, 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 we, uh, I don't like that one. They gonna jump wrong up there every year. Can't say that I blame somebody for crying. I'm gonna go down, I'm gonna, no, I don't. I'm gonna go down to Mount City, I'm gonna tell them, here's the deal. This year, I'm gonna take X amount from a coin, and next year, I want a hundred and ten percent of that, and then the following year, I want a hundred and ten percent of that. I'm gonna go down there and tell them what they're gonna pay.
Yeah.
Is that how that works?
That's my theory.
Forty three, three thirty, two ninety six, times one point zero four, equals forty five. Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, okay. I admire somebody that's got some ambition about them, I like the way they think.
Uh, Justin? Uh, this judge, Mr. Wade, so I forgot, am I supposed to try to encourage him to go ahead and hire a judge to fill it?
An attorney, yeah.
Yeah. Or say attorney, or attorney, or court.
Well, I believe Mark Hunter is doing what Corey.
That's what he was doing for the time being, but we need an assistant even, don't we?
Yes.
Would be, would be, it'd be cheaper to hire a full-time assistant than it is.
Hunter's got the full-time job.
That's what he's been doing.
Now he has a assistant.
It would, it would reduce our costs a lot on.
Appointed attorneys.
Appointed attorneys.
I was running by there now. Probably can't, I mean, I'll, I'll have to find out when he's working, I'll come down early, maybe.
When are we getting our new judge? December first? Wouldn't we be sworn, I don't know whether he'd be sworn in then or beforehand, since it's the situation.
Dave, Gerald, that DVD that shows the plumbing runs. Can I just look at it?
You ever try to use your pickup?
No.
I don't even own a CD.
Will we do anything yet today on this or not?
No.
Well, you gonna give me that sheet back, or I have it, or are you gonna take?
He done lost it. It's the one that was.
I left it, I left it down there.
Well, here, where's your old one at? You might as well make a copy of that, right?
I don't need that.
That's the new one.
Yeah, that's all I need.
No? Are we gonna prove that?
No, but, I mean, I thought he wanted a copy of it.
Yeah.
I don't wanna copy that.
Where, where are we gonna start at then? We'll just do it next. All right, whatever. Do you like the way that looks, Jason?
Well, no, but we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, I agree. I'm going to work, boys and girl. My mouth's a big man. Mama need him first. Baby needs some clothes, some shoes.
You got new babies, you know?
No, I don't got none, no, no.
That girl you're going with, she got young kids?
He's thirteen year old.